Welcome to this Town Hall meeting on our WASC reaccreditation process. This will be, I think, the second to the last of these Town Hall meetings on the WASC reaccreditation process. I think as your -- so the Goldenrod Sheet is your agenda for today. And you'll notice that there will be one more Town Hall meeting in September in anticipation of the Educational Effectiveness Review Visit, which will be very quickly forthcoming after that. I just want to introduce us all. I'm Scott Miller, Chair of the Faculty, and I've been on the Accreditation Reviews Steering Committee for, I think, since its inception. But our primary speakers today are Andy Merrifield and Prof. Tsa Tsa, who are the co-chairs of the Accreditation Review Steering Committee. We also have with us two of the writers of the Educational Effectiveness Review Report, Diana Grant and Tim Wondling. And I think the first thing that I would like to ask you, just to indulge me in thanking these people for their incredible quantity and quality of work over the last couple of years. Will you join me in that, please? As you can see from our agenda, we're essentially going to have some remarks from Andy and Eduardo on the question of what exactly is an educational effectiveness review and what does accreditation mean for us. Oh, and here's the third of our report writers, Andy Wallace, Professor of Philosophy. Thank you, Andy. And then we will simply open it up for discussion, Q and A. And then finally, I think both, or Andy and or Eduardo, have some sort of concluding remarks on the question of what can you do to help our accreditation report. So with that, I'd just like to turn it over to Andy and Eduardo.
Okay. All right. Well, good morning, everybody, and I should say good afternoon now. What is an educational effectiveness review? Well, and many of you probably know this already, but just for the sake of completeness, the Western Association of Schools and Colleges is the regional accrediting agency for Sonoma State University. We need to remain accredited with WASC in order to qualify, have our students qualify for federal financial aid. So that's the big stick that the regional creditors have over institutions. So it is something that we take seriously. Now, more substantively, the Regional Accreditation Agency is a peer group. The Commission, that is the governance body for it, the Senior Commission, because WASC has three commissions, one for K-12, one for community colleges, and one for four-year colleges and universities, is -- the membership of that board is, are drawn from the universities that get reviewed by WASC itself. So it is peer review, basically, the process that we go through. And we, and there are standards for, that have been spelled out for accreditation. WASC has just four standards, but many criteria for review under those standards. And they have also instituted a two-visit process, a two-stage process, where the campus is first visited by a team in a capacity and preparedness review, and then the subsequent visit, the educational effectiveness review. We just went through the capacity review, preparedness review earlier, when was it?
Spring of...
Spring of last year. And we got some feedback from that review that we are also incorporating in preparing for the educational effectiveness review. The educational effectiveness review is the heart of the process, is where WASC will determine the degree to which we are succeeding in accomplishing our mission and meeting the standards of educational effectiveness as laid out by the Commission. And in the capacity review, they looked at our, whether we had the resources and the structures and the processes in place to be effective. And now in this upcoming review, they're going to actually look at whether we are, in fact, being effective in deploying those resources. So another way of looking at it in a sort of a bumper sticker way would be to say that the main thrust of the capacity review is looking at inputs, and the effectiveness review looks at outputs for the institution. So as the overview document indicates, we, in preparing for this re-accreditation effort, we developed a proposal, an institutional proposal, that outlined how we want to take advantage of this process to move the institution forward. Clearly, when we're talking about relatively mature institutions like Sonoma State that have been accredited before, this review goes beyond simply ensuring that the minimum baseline requirements are met and tries to use this process to, for the institution to focus in some area or another that it wants to particularly advance. And so the theme that we picked for our proposal was educating the whole student. That seemed to be the overarching descriptor for what we had done. But in reality, the way we developed our initial proposal was, we took a fairly systematic look at our institution vis-à-vis the standards and identified areas where we could profitably focus to improve in. And so we had quite a long list of things we wanted to look at. We had the focusing on the distinctive nature of SSU education and the mark of a SSU graduate was one. The second one was the curriculum and student learning outcomes of GE and the major. Third one was the co-curriculum of residential life as elements of a distinctive SSU education. Fourth, the faculty roles and responsibilities in teaching, scholarship, mentoring, and advising. And fifth, the value of diversity in educating the whole student. So that was a pretty comprehensive list. And actually, the feedback we got on that first report proposal was that it was too ambitious for a re-accreditation process. So they wanted us to whittle it down to something more manageable. And so we came back with two major points, being the distinctive qualities of a Sonoma State University education and curriculum and the roles of general education and the major. And so that is, in fact, the specific thrust of this review. But the other piece of it is that in the capacity visit, there were a number of issues that were identified by the team and supported by the Commission itself that they wanted us to look at in preparation for the educational effectiveness review. And that's a list that includes addressing systematically the elements articulated in our recent expressions of concern to strengthen the sense of community and allow us to accomplish other aspirations of the institution, to reach consensus on a clear definition of our mission, to, in a memorable word, to yoke disparate planning efforts into a single respected process. Fourth one was to assure that education outcomes directly drive appropriate assessments that yield information used in course and programmatic improvement. That's a kind of a standard issue that I think shows up in every single capacity visit by WASC these days. It's the core of what they're looking for. Now, what they're pushing institutions to do is to so-called close the loop, to take assessment the next step forward, and use the results of assessment to inform continuous program improvement. Fifth, in the context of a clear mission and coherent planning to reach agreement on general education reform and with a timeline and demonstrable progress. So they definitely are enjoining us to move on the GE issue. And finally, to extend our diversity efforts through pragmatic strategies. And so we have been working on that, on a number of these issues. And I think that we'll be able to show some significant progress to WASC on a number of those. And we can talk about those in greater length if time allows. But finally, the overview document also gives you a structure of what the educational effectiveness report looks like. And it really, just looking at that report outline, shows you what really the thrust of this visit is about. We're going to have some boilerplate in terms of overview of the institution and any changes that have occurred since the last visit. And then you have three reflective essays that are going to be on SSU's planning efforts is one. The next one is the distinctive qualities of an SSU education. And finally, the third one on the curriculum and the role of general education and the major. So that's, that is the heart of the, of the report and what the visitors are going to look for. We also, and under curriculum and the role of G and the major, we have three subheadings which are significant. One is general education itself. The other one is academic program review and how we've been using that to move forward. And diversity is the fourth one. And you're all aware that we've been doing quite a bit about diversity this year. So that's kind of what we can expect. And there's also some other materials that you have here that can help you get a clearer sense of what is going on. An interesting one is the revised Two Lenses document, which is not called Two Lenses anymore. It's the one that says Expectations for Two Reviews Clarifying the Focus. And it shows you how, for each of the four standards, when you're looking at it from a capacity standpoint, you're looking at certain things, but then in the educational effectiveness review, you're looking for outcomes-oriented indicators relative to those standards. So it's important for us, obviously, this is a very important process. Again, let me reiterate, as we have, both Andy and I, in the past, that Sonoma State is not in any imminent danger of losing accreditation. We are a mature institution. We have, compared to the universal institutions that WASC credits, we are well-resourced. We have the scale and the capacity that only a minority of the institutions that they cover have. And so the real question for us in this upcoming visit will be, are we going to get a full 10-year re-accreditation with no caveats? Or are we going to get something less than that? Because in the menu of options that the Commission has, they can re-accredit us for as little as five years before another review, or seven, or 10. They could ask for some follow-up report on whatever issues they find that need to follow up on, or they could call for a special visit if they see something that they really need to look at prior to re-accreditation. So clearly, what we're shooting for is the best outcome in our, in our opinion, which is the 10-year re-accreditation. So that's kind of a, and of course, and what it means for us is that if we get the 10-year re-accreditation, we don't have to do this until then. And that would be the benefit to us. But we are also, we have, to the extent that it is feasible, we have made an effort to use this process to help organize ourselves in along, you know, areas and along directions of progress that we would have wanted to do anyway. And so to raise them, we've done that as well. So Andy, let's turn it over to you.
Okay, thanks.
How does the budget, the current state budget situation impact not only our process, but the lens that WASC is using to view us? Or does it?
That's a question that's obviously affecting everybody, because it's not just the CSU and the state budget that's affecting the public institutions here, but also other institutions have suffered from the economic downturn, the loss of endowments. And so this is pretty much a universal environmental factor, the adverse economic conditions. And I haven't seen anything clearly spelled out about it, but I am confident that this is something that, since it affects everybody and it has nothing to do with an institution's ability to, or capacity to do what it's doing, it's not going to be a major issue for us.
So you don't refer to it in the WASC premise, or it's the elephant, the rumor, or something? Is everyone, can you say, well, we can't do this because of the situation? We can't do this because of the situation?
We, no. That's, I think we have to, you know, what we have to show is what we are doing to meet the standards. And it may not be as much as we would have done without the budget, but yeah, we're not going to go there.
If I may say, I think that maybe the report writers might want to respond to that question, too. But let's hear from Andy first, and then we'll come back.
Well, thanks. Actually, I only had a couple of quick observations as a sort of, as we move forward. And one is that, I mean, Eduardo's done a, given an overview, and Elaine Sundberg, et cetera, in her overview of educational effectiveness report, has laid out the one important thing, and that is, as we move forward with WASC, it's important that the members of the community realize what WASC is and what it isn't. Okay? It's not an end-all and be-all. And so when the WASC committee comes to visit us in October, and we are dealing with them, and they will be, you know, they will literally be wandering around looking for people to talk to, and there will be a number of events where people can go and talk to them about WASC. I think one of the things that we, we need to be cognizant of why we are there. So it's an opportunity to talk to them about things dealing with re-accreditation. It's not really a forum for talking about absolutely everything. Okay? So I think it's important that we do understand exactly what they do and what they don't do. And in a second, I want to kind of respond to Elaine's point about what WASC might look at vis-à-vis budget from a different perspective. And the other thing is, is that as we are passing out information from now until September, and then, you know, stuff is up on the website as it's completed, et cetera, more information is coming out, it's really helpful to familiarize yourself, especially if you are someone who has concerns about the way things are going, whether it's about diversity or anything else. And I know there are people with concerns about the direction that the campus is going. I think that the best way to be effective in talking to WASC and making your case is to be knowledgeable of what's going on. I mean, you know, that we will have, people will have greater credibility in talking to WASC if they are knowledgeable about where we are and what we're doing. Okay? So I would strongly encourage all of you who are interested in this process and who are interested in talking to WASC this fall, to know where we really are and what we really are working on. And towards that end also, because from the beginning, I've had three reasons why I got involved in this. One is, I don't ever want to do it again. You know? And if we can do 10 years, I'm out of here. So I don't ever have to do it again. You know, two, I was hoping that we would learn something by talking to other institutions about what they're doing, that, you know, some information sharing. And I went to one conference, I brought a lot of material, and picked up a little. And three, I had a specific thing that this whole project, which was going to be very labor-intensive, wasn't going to come directly out of the hide of my colleagues. And these people writing these papers are, we do have reassignment time. So we are, you know, so all three of those things, good, came out of it. But also, we had an opportunity to do some things internally. And the relationship between WASC and diversity, it worked out. Okay? We are making some progress on diversity. I don't think we are where we want to be, and I don't know even where we should be yet, but we are clearly, I think, on an upward swing on diversity, an issue we've talked about for a long time. And so as this becomes an issue in WASC, and if you have additional concerns about diversity over and above, you don't think that we've, you know, there's things we've missed or whatever, it would be really useful, actually, to bring those concerns to the WASC group, okay, in advance of WASC. Okay? I really would like us to have a successful visit. I would, I think the faculty and the entire university will benefit from that, commensurate with honesty and openness. Okay? So for those people who are concerned about WASC, what WASC is doing and how WASC is working out, please, this kind of goes probably to the last thing, what can you do to help with the accreditation effort? Let us know things that you think we need to do more of. Let us know things that we're missing. Let us know things that you think about, but you're not sure we are thinking about, so we can incorporate, be more effective, and that we can respond. And those are, you know, the major points I wanted to make. Now, getting back to the issue about WASC and the budget, okay? The, I was at a conference in New York, and this comes from the President, not of WASC, but of what's called, I think, the Middle States Program, which ironically is actually in the Northeast. So, you know, why the Middle States Program is New York and New England, I don't know, but maybe they count the Azores or something. But anyway, one of the things that did come up was, one concern is disproportionate dependence on contingent faculty. Okay? But even then, the guy said, look, we have to take into consideration the realities of the budget. I mean, ideally, a good institution should have as many permanent faculty as possible because they're the ones that are important in developing curriculum. And the same thing, I'm sure, would apply to student service professionals, right? You cannot do an adequate job serving the students if you're underfunded. But there was the recognition that we live in the world that we live in. So it isn't getting a pass exactly, but what this guy said as a former president is, in bad times, there is a recognition that you can't do as much as in good times. And that was, was a, and so I think that, and he was saying, I'm specifically talking for this group, but he was also saying he was pretty sure that's the reality of the situation. So if that's at all helpful in answering the question.
Okay, let's take more questions. And I think in lieu of having you come up to ask the questions, we'll just repeat the questions, but I would ask if any of the report writers wish to weigh in on the questions, would you please come up and speak in the mic? Thank you. Susan?
Just a couple of practical questions. Do we have a specific date for the visit? Do we know who's going to be on the team? And third, are circumstances since the last visit have changed considerably? And I'm wondering if the report is going to address that specifically? For instance, our endowment is cited as something that makes us distinctive, and now the endowment, like everybody else's, has imploded in terms of resources available. So are we going to address the changes between the last visit and the next visit? And particularly with reference to what Elaine was talking about, funding the mission?
So the question is about, how does the EER visit reflect changes in the institution? And when exactly is the visit?
The visit is in October, but I don't know the exact date.
I'm thinking the second week, but I wish I had, if I had my schedule book here, but I could still...
I think that's right, Diana.
And we have the same team.
Yeah.
What we had, there's one more person that's been added. And I didn't get that information from Elaine. She mentioned it at one point, but I don't recall right now. As far as the budget goes and the endowment, again, WASC, I mean, I was recently on a WASC team visit to a private college that relies much more prominently on its endowment. And the fact that their endowment went down was mentioned in passing, but was not really a big focus of the review. Really, the key focus is on the actual outcomes vis-à-vis the standards. And you can state those in a positive way, and rather than focus on G, if we hadn't had this loss in the endowment, then we could have done this, but now we can't do that. Rather, it's what is it that we are doing, and how is it accomplishing, how is it meeting the standards? I don't know if the writers want to add anything to that.
I don't want to add. I just want to say, I don't know how many people have questions today, but one of the things we talked about at our planning meeting for this was to get as many questions and statements heard as possible before we all take courage responding to them. So, but it's a smaller group than I imagined, and so I don't mind if you want to just do it differently, or just ask how many people want to have questions or comments heard today. But that's the goal for me, is to hear what's on people's mind, rather than hearing me respond to, you know, each of us taking a try to respond to things.
Yeah, it's a great point. If there, if people wish to come up and make a sequence of statements or ask questions that we should hear, please, maybe line up, or I'll just catch people's hands. If not, maybe we'll just...
Can we just keep doing what we're doing?
Just keep doing what I'm doing.
I thought there'd be a bigger group.
Elaine?
What are the hot button issues? I mean, if we are, many of us are going to be interviewed or staffed or whatever, what's going to come up today?
Glad you asked. Hot button issues.
Well, let me take a stab at that. I mean, I think we have to be cognizant, and that's something I didn't mention before, which is, where is WASC coming from in these reviews? What is their perspective? And I think we have to be aware, which we are normally not that aware of in the campus, that WASC is subject to external pressures, broader societal pressures, from Congress, the federal government. There are sectors there that are openly questioning the viability of regional accreditation, peer-reviewed, you know, peer-based regional accreditation, and so lurking in the wings is the alternative of federalizing accreditation. And so, and it has to do with sort of spillover or halo effect from the kind of mindset that led to No Child Left Behind. It's the question of, how do we know that we're getting something, you know, for our money? What is actually, what's it, what are colleges producing actually? And so that's kind of what they're trying to forestall in a lot of what they do. Their push for assessment, for even for accountability, is because they feel, and "they" is us, as Ralph likes to say, that, you know, if we don't, if we don't do something that addresses those concerns that we design ourselves collectively, then the politicians or the bureaucracy will do it for us. And so, so when they come and visit, they do want to, they will universally drill in on assessment, on closing the loop, on how is that assessment leading to curriculum improvement, programmatic improvement, and so forth. So those are, those are big issues. Also, I think that WASC, there has been a tendency in WASC to try to provide more detailed guidance on how to meet the criteria for review with a lot of, they've sort of gone a little bit hog-wild with developing rubrics of various types. And there's, there's a couple of task forces that are looking at student success. That's another issue that they're responding to from societal pressure, is graduation rates and all that sort of thing, and retention rates. So there's two task forces working right now. One on program review, and the other one on student success. So program review is one that they're also going to look at, and how we're, how we're using that process to continually improve our programs. And in terms of student success, they're looking at, they're kind of watching some of the stuff that's happening in the CSU as a whole as well, and now they're asking us to report on graduation rates by major and not just overall. There are problems with that. I wrote a little monograph that I sent to WASC about the problems defining what, you know, graduation rates by major means, because it's not clear what the base and the ratio is. They promptly put me in the task force on student success. It's our result. But at any rate, those are some of the things they're going to be looking at. And then, of course, there are the issues that were raised by the capacity visit. So, and I think that, you know, those, those are important. And we, and I think we have made some, some significant progress in a number of these areas. I think that there has been increased dialogue and communication about the issues that were raised in the Bono Conference Resolution. The President, you know, did a systematic response. There's been continued dialogue about these issues. We have been talking about the mission, and we can document how we have been doing that in a variety of forums. And our planning efforts, I think, are really progressing well. As you probably know, the Academic Senate endorsed the Academic Affairs Strategic Plan, which now basically merges the long-range academic plan that had been developed by the Academic Planning Committee and the Academic Affairs Strategic Plan that had been developed since my arrival through an alternative process. So we have those two converging. And the university strategic plan is going to be, you know, we're, that committee has concluded its incorporating all the comments that were received from the campus community. And it's, I expect that it will be scheduled for consideration by the Senate before the end of the year. So hopefully, that will also be another way in which we can show that we have moved progress, moved forward on planning. And on diversity... diversity, I think, you know, as Andy mentioned, we, there's been a lot, probably that's the one issue where there has been, I would say, enthusiastic convergence and coalescence of the campus community around this issue on all fronts. And we have the President's Diversity Council and we have the Ad Hoc Diversity Committee of the Senate and the CFA's Affirmative Action Committee, all working collaboratively and moving forward on this agenda. So I think that we'll be able to, you know, to demonstrate clear progress on a number of the issues that were raised. But again, the, the core issue that they're going to, if, if there's any issue, I think, that is going to call for a special visit would be if there's any perceived shortcomings in our, the progress we're making in assessment, in closing the loop, and in program review. So that's going to be the heart of the, of the visit. Yeah.
Eduardo, what is your sense of what they will accept for GE reform? You know, how much reform are they?
Question is about the extent of GE reform, what they will like.
Well, we have a, we have a, you know, there's, there's three takes on that. You know, this is a little bit like a Talmudic exercise. Because you have, first, you have the, the portion of the body of the team's report that talks about that in detail. You have the summary statement that was essentially drafted by the chair of the team that sort of wraps it up. And then you've got the, the commission letter. And each one has a slightly different take on this issue. Now, on one, in one place, and I believe it's in the body of the report, there is a statement that, well, the campus needs to decide whether it's going to reform GE in an ambitious way or whether it's going to scale down its expectations and do some, you know, minor adjustments. But whichever it does, it needs to make up its mind, you know, and then move forward with one or the other. And I think that the, the concluding statement by, summarizing statement by the chair of the, of the team, and I should point out that the chair ultimately owns the team report because they get final editing of the, of the report and communicates, is the one that communicates with the commission. And there you get a sense that, you know, that we were being encouraged to move forward on, on a more substantial path of reform. And that's not too surprising considering who the chair of the team was. Because Paul Gaston's been involved in, you know, GE himself and, and so would be supportive of a lot of those things. And I think that, and then the, the language in the, in the actual commission letter is technically the one that's binding on us. And so we would have to parse through word by word what that says. And I have to admit, I don't recall it off the top of my head, but it seemed to me that it was more based on the language of the summary remarks by the team chair.
Tim, did you want to, Tim, Tim is writing that section of the report. Is, did you, were you going to comment?
Yeah, I was.
Would you, would you?
Do I have to? I can speak from here.
I just want to make sure that the.
Are you trying to record us? I'll project my voice. I just want to also address Lane's question too, because I, this is the same committee. I think they like to look around the campus for evidence. They're a very evidence-based group. Because I remember last time they just walked around and said, you, and they're going to look, well, this is what we say we're doing. And they, I'm going to go look for, for how you're educating the whole student. I remember they specifically walked across the campus to look for co-curricular activities and where's educating the whole student happening? So here, our own self-representation is that's what we're doing. So I think that's a hot button issue with this group. It's like, this is what you say you're doing. So if there's been a response of the vote of no confidence, how did, how does that happen? How do people feel? And if GE reform is happening, they should be able to talk to GE faculty and say, what kind, how, how are you interested? How is that reflected in what you're doing? I think we're fine in light of what they're, they want us to clarify our things. I think our GE subcommittee has done some excellent work. But I also want to say on behalf of the other writers, that's what's so damn hard about this right now, because we're writing history. And we're trying to represent the reality that we want represented, but that reality has first to be created. GE just had a program review. A&amp;H is just doing a major GE reform discussion. There's just a lot of stuff going on right now that we're trying to capture in these letters that we're writing.
I'm working on Senate action, so I can write more.
Right. So, you know, we need to be accurate in representing ourselves. And then when they come and talk to the rest of the campus, there should be some meshing between that representation and the reality on the ground. So I think that in terms of, I think that what I read in all those different documents that I was talking about is that they want our, it's the yoking, we're all joking about the yoking, but they want us all to be sort of aligned in what we think we're doing, rather than have one group on campus thinking we're massively reforming GE and another group thinking we're going to resist that at all costs and another group saying, just work on the learning outcome. So I think there is more, much more synergy, if you, if you don't mind that word, along the way that I'm writing about in my essay on GE. But it's still kind of formative. So I'm going to be careful not to overclaim anything that we've said in review. I think that's where we've gotten into trouble in the past too, is to say, we've got this whole new thing we haven't yet. And we're trying to write it carefully and also represent what's actually happening.
I just wanted to make a couple of really small observations. One is, as, going back to what Tim said about they're evidence-based, which also means it's dynamic. So, and, and, you know, what's the hot button issues? It may be driven by, if they go and talk to somebody and the feedback they get from that conversation may move them somewhat. Now, we know, or, or that part of the report is written before they arrive and part of the report is a result of what they see and hear. Okay? So they do have certain key things they're going to touch on no matter what. But it is, I, I, at least my impression was in dealing within, I'll be briefly last time, that it was dynamic. They would start a conversation about an issue and depending on the answers they got, that's where they would go. So, because they're looking for evidence, because they're just not going to accept it. So that's one thing to take into consideration. You know, you can pre-plan and have all the canned answers you want, but that's only going to take you so far. That they're going to see what, I mean, I, I think that, that because of the nature of this campus and because diversity was so important and has been so important, that any conversation about diversity may lead them in any number of different directions.
I guess the only thing I would add is if on October 10th, 2009, a well-dressed stranger sidles up to you and says, so, what are you doing?
Run.
I'm a necessity. Exactly.
Turn around and walk the other side.
Exactly. And they're probably going to munch you.
Well, I was thinking something more along the lines of, I am educating the whole student by.
I'm completing, I'm completing the feedback.
Exactly. Other questions?
Well, I just want to add one comment.
You would, and I'll.
Okay, please.
It seems like they care about direct assessment.
A lot.
In, in curricular decision-making versus indirect assessment. They seem to care about that, that they want the departments to be engaging directly with student, with student performance instead of indirectly by asking students how they'd like their class or how they'd like their, you know, these exit interviews. And so they want direct, it seems like that's what they care about. I'm writing the program review reflective essay. That's been my sense in terms of their, they have these rubrics that they develop about assessment. And at the high end of the rubric is direct assessment. So they might, they might ask about how, if you're a faculty member, they might ask you about what's going on in assessment in your department.
Diane?
So to follow up with what Andy said, it would not be a good thing to say, SS what? Or WASC what? I just wanted to make a pitch for viewing things on our online portfolio because it is an important site where we can all gather and see stuff. And also, just to realize, we have to get this report to WASC, which their requirement, by essentially, I think it's the first week in June, it's the second week in June, I mean.
No, it's the end of June.
It's the end of June. It was going to be the second week in June. It's the end of June now. That means that, you know, we're trying to get, they're going to see a report and by the time they come in October, stuff may well have happened in September that they're going to talk about. But it won't be in the report because they want the report, they want their portfolio sort of frozen in stone. And then they are also moving, as Elaine Sundberg would say, a moving target. For example, they come up with new requirements sometimes than they had a few months ago. So for example, we have to provide a flash drive with absolutely everything. We basically have to download the website and put it on a flash drive. About what you want in terms of effectiveness and efficiency. So, so for the up-to-date stuff, just keep that in mind that we have to sort of stock and give them stuff three months in advance. And that's where it's going to sort of be crystallized in time for them until they actually come to visit us. So, oh, and that, my last part of the pitch was, think about your unit, your department, are participating in the poster session? I think that would be very effective to say. WASC does require us to have a poster session. It's not like we just want to do show and get all.
Well, actually, it's not required.
It's not required.
It's not required.
It's not required.
I thought it was required.
I heard it straight from Terry Cannon. It's not required.
Good, good correction then, I would say. But it's really, really strongly wanted.
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, after your peers have done it, you know, you kind of feel like you have to.
And she could get two.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not required, but it's really a good idea.
And the, the, an email went out just the other day for on guidelines for the posters. Other questions?
After the, after the writers, when you finish the essays, are they, are you putting them out for, for campus feedback before they go on?
Question is, what will be the, the feedback process from campus on the essays?
You want us to take that? We just talked about that yesterday. We're, we're hoping to get at least drafty drafts, by you, which, which by drafty drafts, we mean that we're, we're still to be in the process of writing it. And we, we would appreciate your collaboration in trying to figure out the things that we've left out that need to be in there. So in other words, we don't want, shoot, shoot, don't shoot us if we forgot something that's important to you yet. We, we do want to get.
Or we refer to something that hasn't quite happened yet.
Yes. Or we might have a gap in it. So we're still kind of filling in some things. Like I still have to take in some of the stuff that just happened with the GE external review. Or I want to make sure it counts that that just happened. So there may be just a block that says, here will be a space addressing that, but it won't be up. But we hope to get those out by Thursday, we said, next week?
Yeah, we're going to have them up online by Thursday of next week. But they, they're going to be incomplete because there'll still be stuff happening that we'll, that we'll probably have to put in after the semester ends. I know for me, on my program review, there's still data that I don't have. It cannot be completed now. But the, some of it is complete. And the outline of the, of that essay, just thinking, because I'm writing it, it's been outlined and many of the parts of the outline have already been written and are done. And some of it haven't been. And so they're, they, they are completely open to revision. So whatever gets said there can be changed, if it can be said better. That's my view. So, you know, so I don't really care. It's, it's not a final, in my view, as a writer, nothing is ever final anyway, but.
They're drafty drafts.
But, but these, but these will be especially drafty drafts. And I also want to say on this that I wish these were already done. You know, really, you know, we had a series of deadlines along the way that we all met, but we just couldn't get them done because there wasn't enough to be said. And that's been the main problem. Not that we've been sort of, you know, doing something else. But, so, so there will be something up there because I think it's really important to get feedback. I thought that we had a really great process of feedback on the capacity appropriate group. We were able to get those essays up there sooner. We have a real short, you know, period of time between these two reviews. So that's part of the problem. And we've been trying to cram too much in this year. And, but, but that's it. That's it. We have to get them to Elaine on Tuesday. They're going to go to ARSC on Wednesday for ARSC feedback. And then they'll be put up on Thursday.
ARSC is the Accreditation Reviews Steering Committee.
So the, the website is on your goldenrod sheet. It's the one that says a portfolio. That's, that's the website. We're running low on time. I just want to see if there's anything else either Provost Chilo or Andy wanted to say about this question of what can you do? Is there anything else you wanted to add, Provost Chilo?
Well, I, I think that, you know, just to share with you, my own experience as a, a WASC team member, I've, I've led several reviews. I've been a member of others. And after a while, you, you get a picture of the institution. And, you know, people who try too hard to skew your perception of it one way or the other aren't successful because you put it in context. So, you know, you, you don't worry too much about that. I mean, people are, they, they come in with perspective. A lot of things that we think are unique to us, for example, are issues that are common to higher education everywhere. So they understand, you know, they, they know the territory. So, so I think we can be a little, you know, I would say, let's be a little more relaxed about this. And, and trust that they, that they'll get, you know, just, just let them know who we are and they'll get a picture.
Trust that we've got the goods. Andy, is there anything else you want to add?
No, I guess, I think that's my.
Okay. We can take a few more questions, but I just wanted to say one more thing. And that is, the next time you see Elaine Sundberg, just come up to her, shake her hand and say, thank you. Thank you. She really just has been so, just, just the center of our activity. And her leadership has been astonishing. Her, the, the specific work on various elements has been just right there. And we owe her a huge debt of gratitude on this. Yeah. So I, I, for the questions, comments. Seems like maybe we can.
Okay.
Say goodbye until September on this topic. Thank you very much.